Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 31st, 2016 Planning Board Meeting. I have to announce that we are recording this for the purpose of the minutes. Elcat is also recording this, and I have to ask if anyone else in the audience is recording it. Seeing none, we will jump right in. We have a public hearing tonight for our revised site plan for Ellie Belcher, 227 Shaker Road. Do we have the article to read in?
Yes, we do. The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 31st, 2016 at 6:00 at the Council of Aging Conference Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Massachusetts, for the revision to an improved site plan for the construction of a convenience store and gas station at 227 Shaker Road submitted by Leonard E. Belcher.
And do we have any information, police report?
Nothing new.
That hasn't changed, nothing new? And did we hear from the fire department?
I've talked to Paul today, and he said nothing new, but they were going to get me the report, but they did not.
Okay. I just want everyone to realize that what we're here for is an amendment to the site plan. A special permit has already been issued, and it is in force. So what we're doing is, I believe that there's some adjustments to the site plan that the applicant is looking to make. So what I'll do is I'll open it up to you first, have you explain the site plan, the amendments. I'll bring it back to the board for some discussion, then I'll open it up to the public for any public comments, bring it back to the board, and we'll go from there. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and would you like to explain what you would like to do?
For the record, my name is Jim Shields. I'm the attorney representing Leonard E. Belcher Incorporated. Excuse me, they're based at 615 St. James Avenue in Springfield, and as you point out, Belcher is the, has a special permit to develop property at the corner of Chestnut and Shaker for a convenience store and fuel dispensing station. We've received not only the special permit, but site plan approval, and we also received the approval of the Conservation Commission because of the water runoff and some wetlands areas that are there. Subsequent, and with me tonight, just so everybody, the cast of characters can be introduced, next to me is Ed Huff, who is the president of Ellie Belcher. This is Dave Ryan, who's the chief operating officer of Belcher, and we have two engineers with us tonight. On the left is Russ Seer, who's the project engineer for this project, and on the right is Frank Montero, who is a petroleum engineer and a consultant to Belcher on this project. Several months ago now, I guess, as the plans were being reviewed to prepare for the commencement of construction, a number of inconsistencies in the original plan were discovered. Some of the, for example, the exhibit for the plans that showed the light, the lighting was inaccurate. It didn't depict all of the lights that were intended. In addition to that, there were some changes that were recommended about the layout of the canopy and the fuel dispensing stations themselves, having to do largely with the clearance from the front of the structure and the sidewalk there, and the edge of the canopy and island where the fuel would be dispensed. And it was determined that it would be more efficient and safer and promote better traffic flow if, instead of having them vertically, if they were angled, as you can see on this drawing here. So one of the byproducts of that was that the canopy itself could be reduced in size. So what I have here for each of you is a summary, there's actually a couple of things in there, there's a reduced copy of that drawing. There is the summary of the changes to the, to the plans that were previously approved, and there is also a letter from our traffic engineer who indicates that his conclusions regarding traffic flow. Oh, sure, if there's extras. The traffic engineer indicates that there is no change to his conclusions regarding traffic flow as a result of this. But you can see the changes, with the exception, I would say, of the canopy and the fuel dispensing stations, most of the other changes are quite minor. We added some bollards here, we put some different fencing there. All of them are outlined here, and the folks that are with me tonight, who know far more about the particulars, can speak to each one of them. We have appeared before the Conservation Commission and received their approval. There's no changes to the order of conditions that they promulgated based on the changed plans that we have here. But obviously, since we are making changes to the plans, we do need the approval of the board, and that's what we're here for. So that's all I have to say, and I don't know whether any of these gentlemen want to say anything in addition, or if you just, if they would rather just respond to any questions you may have. You should have each received the full set of plans that were delivered last week with full-size drawings.
Would you guys like to add anything to it, or?
Just real brief, I just want to, you know, it's a little cramped in here.
My name is, for the record, my name is Russell Seer, professional engineer of the firm, the engineering firm of Alfred Benish Company, Flatsburg, Connecticut. I just want to, just to punctuate the fact that, from an engineering standpoint, there's virtually no change. The impervious area is the same, hence the drainage areas, drainage system is exactly the same, nothing's changed. The only real change is the fuel island dispenser, they got angled, the canopy got shortened. We added some guide rail along the top of the slope. We added guide rail back here, we added a fence along the back of this, a chain link fence. We put some additional bollards along the fronts of the parking spaces to prevent cars from hitting the buildings. That's basically it. So, just by two cents.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to the board. Do we have any questions that you would like answered?
Can you remind me, what is the distance, the clearance on either side of the canopy between the fueling station and the back of the parking places and the fueling station and the long end? I'm sure it's in here somewhere, a step mark on the canopy on hand.
The dimensions were turned off, I suppose. It's 32 feet from the back.
The dimension to the canopy hasn't changed.
Right, I'm just trying to remember what the width of the two programs are.
The canopy doesn't, 32.
It's 32.
32, okay. On either side? That's plenty, okay, good.
You know, I gotta be honest with you, I think the angle probably functions better than the way it had it before.
Well, that's what we think, too.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm thinking about traffic flow, and I'm thinking about cars coming in from Shaker Road and cars coming in from Shaker, from Chestnut. Seems a little bit easier to get into the pumps now than it was before.
I think more importantly, it's better for people who are backing out of the spaces in front. There'll be less of a conflict with the cars at the pump. Think about being at the pump angle, you won't have to drive forward and around, so you save some distance there. Our initial thought was it was too tight on the original drawing, and you would have that conflict that you think this eliminates.
I do have a question.
That's exactly what I do, since one other thing I forgot to mention, at Bob Parent's suggestion, the entrance coming in off of Shaker, the grade is less severe. We've changed the grade, so it's not quite as steep a drop.
Yeah, it's not quite as steep, plus you also put the guard rail along that north side of it. So God forbid something does happen, and you won't have a car going down and into the detention basin.
It looks like the curb cut off of Shaker is in the exact same location. Is that true or false?
True.
True.
That is true.
Okay. How about the one in Chestnut?
Didn't change that.
All right, because our concern the first time was how close it was to the bike path.
Right. Never touched it. Never touched it.
And as, that's a double-edged sword, of course, because when you come around the corner, if it's too short to Shaker, you cause a problem, but if it's too close to the bike path, you also cause a problem.
That's why we put the rumble strips there, if you recall, that was to sort of alert people that they had to be a little more aware as they were leaving the site.
Now, didn't we talk about some signage or something around by the bike path?
Flashing light. We're gonna install a flashing.
Okay, all right, so we still have the flashing light, nothing's changed there.
Are they in here?
Yeah, they're in there.
With the flashing light, is there a timeframe, like, towards the beginning of construction? Or are you waiting till? And the reason I'm asking is-
They can be a priority, but it doesn't really matter. We'll put them in, we'll put them right in at the beginning.
What I like about doing it now is that it gets people in the habit, so that when you finally do open, they already, they've already gone a couple of months knowing that there's a light there.
Not to mention-
Before traffic goes in and out.
Large trucks, construction vehicles, that was-
Not a problem for us.
Yeah, like, in my opinion, it's up to the board, but in my opinion, I'd like to see that happen right away.
Watch your side, right here. Yeah. Let's go forward.
The gasoline tanks, the USTs, what do we have for size that says that they've been modified? I know under our bylaw-
Two 20,000 gallon tanks.
And how are they gonna be split? Because under our bylaw, Section 5.7, there's a maximum of 30,000 gallons of gasoline, but you can have up to two additional fuels, which I would assume would be a diesel, kerosene, something on that idea.
So Frank, it's, we have a 10, we have two 20,000 gallon tanks, there's, one of them is split 10 and 10, and the other is 12 and 8. So our plan is to have 22,000 of no lead, 8,000 of premium, and, no. 10 diesel. 10 diesel, right, is that right? Yeah.
The two tanks are split, I'm sorry, Frank Montero with MHF Design, we're the petroleum consultants. The plan always had two 20,000 gallon tanks. That didn't change. What changed was that they were drawn to the correct length, because they were drawn a little too short, but there's still 20,000 gallons, one split 12, 8, the other one split 10, 10. So the 12 and the 10 compartments are siphoned together to give you 22 of regular.
Yeah.
And then it's eight super 10 diesel.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Where did you say you're from again?
MHF Design Consultants, Southern.
Yeah.
What was your name like?
Are you related?
He approves.
I, um- No comment.
I see an influence.
Yep. And like I said, I did notice when I was going through, and I don't know if we ever actually-
You look familiar, by the way.
Discovered. The fact that there is a maximum under our zoning bylaw, 30,000 gallons of gasoline. So it sounds like you probably knew that, and you have 30,000, not 30,000 gallons in one.
We also, Ralph, you had pointed out in your review of the plans a while back, that the external HVAC units were not properly depicted. That's been corrected. Thank you for catching that.
Yep, I did see that. I don't know if the rest of the board members saw it, located at the end of the building now.
I just want to point out, too, the other, the other benefit of angling the islands and shortening the canopy was it creates a greater distance between any tanker truck that's offloading and anyone trying to get at the fueling position. So we think it just makes for less confusion on the site.
I like the angle better.
With the HVAC units, are those going to be fenced in, and what type of noise are we looking at with those? I mean, they look big.
There's no plan to fence them in. They'll be condenser, standard HVAC, AC condensers. I'm not exactly sure what the details are on those. They'll be mounted in concrete slabs on the door.
Yeah. Is that something, Robin, that we've done in the past, HVAC units, or as far as fencing in, or at least a barrier across the front?
I'm sure we could put a barrier, but it's not, the reason that you did it before was to keep the sound to a minimum.
Okay.
I mean, there seems to be quite a distance between here and this piece of property, so I'm not sure whether-
Quite frankly, compared to the sound of the factory across the rail trail, which can be quite loud.
Yeah, it's probably minimal.
You're not gonna notice these.
And I would think if it got too loud and became a problem, that-
So you can revisit it.
We would revisit it.
I have a question in regards with the outdoor seating. It appears that their 12 is, is that something that needs to, that we've done in the past? Is there a maximum, minimum square footage parking, any requirement, and what sort of outdoor seating?
No. For example, Bentley's, just put them, you know, out in the walkway area for the summer.
As long as no service takes place.
Right. In other words, it's just somebody's just gonna go and sit there.
Grab the slutty and go sit.
Right, yeah.
Okay, one of the things I did notice was on the interior plan, the original plan that we had, had an area for co-branding, whether it be Subway or some condiments or something, and it looks like now-
That's part of the reason it has taken us to start construction, because we were involved with extended discussions with one particular co-branding. Ultimately, it just, it didn't work out.
So there is, right now, I have a, there are any plans for-
Oh, we gotta remove ourselves.
Okay.
Right.
As far as operating it yourself, you have a food prep area inside. I'm assuming you're preparing the food for the people to purchase it and take with them, and not gonna be providing tables or seating or anything like that?
Just the outside seating, nothing inside.
Okay.
Quite as the outside seating design more for the rail trail.
Right. The reason I bring this up is simple, because you get to the point where, if you're preparing it, served on-site, now all of a sudden you get into a restaurant, basically. And in all honesty, if you start doing that, I don't think you have enough parking. For a restaurant, based on the square footage of the store, you only have one extra spot, so you could have one seat.
For a preferred customer.
But as long as, like I said, I just, I think this is something where, if I've seen other, and I'm gonna use a Cumberland Farms as an example, in Westfield, they do make slices of pizza and stuff, but literally you purchase it, literally I'm in my car halfway down the road as I'm eating it. So that wouldn't be considered a restaurant.
Not like our current pride gas station located on, with the seating?
I don't go to that one. Okay, does-
I wanna wear the same seat, so I don't know.
At this time, does any other board members have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open it up to the public. We have a plan that's actually up here.
I just have one question.
Could I have your name and address?
Name, phone number, bed, 255 Chestnut Street. Did you guys look at where the trucks are gonna pull in from? Because I've seen at all the gas stations, how the tanker trucks pull into these gas stations and try to pull out? Has that came into any thought?
We actually had Bob Hill, who, from United Transport, whose office is right down the street, came to the meeting, and he discussed the access to the site at that time. I'm not a truck driver, so I can't-
Yeah, I didn't hear anything say about that, that, that was my question.
We've done the truck turning radius and there's plenty of room on the site, and like I said, by moving the canopy the way we have, we've made-
Well, I understand the site, but I'm saying pulling back out onto either Shaker or Chestnut may be a problem.
It's actually set up, and through the first site plan, that they'll be entering on Shaker Road and exiting on Chestnut Street, so it's a straight shot through.
Right. It-
Yes.
And the other thing is, most of those deliveries are made very, very early in the morning, so there's, they're usually at the non-peak times for a variety of reasons, but common sense being, it's easier to just move the truck.
Well, I know those two streets are fairly busy, as far as to have a, you know, tanker truck trying to pull out.
Yeah, and tanker was trying to back up the hill and onto Shaker Road, that would create problems. That's, that was one of our discussions that we had, making sure that there was enough room, and there are actually graphs that you can put down based on the size of the vehicles to make sure that they can make the swing. We did look at that. Is there anyone else's questions? Has everyone had a chance to see the updates? If you'd like to come on up, or Dave, if you want to turn it around and show them, that would be awesome.
Pass it on.
Sorry, Jamie, that went too quick, didn't it?
Station was it changed a little bit, or something was said earlier on?
The dispensers here?
Vacuum system or-
Oh, the vax, did you move the vax?
No.
The side, on the far side parking.
Over here.
We added the bike rack.
We added a bike rack place.
Is there a path to go from there to the bike trail?
Yes, sidewalk, a couple on Chestnut Street.
Oh, that way, okay. Back to the door.
No, what time, Joe Moore, from 226 Shaker Road, what time of delivery is it gonna be? I mean, they, when they originally had this plan going, they made, somebody made a comment that we don't want to make, take Shaker Road and turn it into a giant parking lot, which apparently it's, that's what it's, that's what it's doing. So with, with the neighbors involved, and of course, a little bit, little bit concerned about the property value, your homes, is there any consideration for having the deliveries done in a decent hour, not three in the morning, or?
What deliveries are you referring to specifically? Gasoline or any deliveries?
Well, gasoline or any, I mean, there's not a, you know, I mean, I work at the Saw, I work at American Saw.
Typically, typically the gasoline deliveries are early in the morning, and, and the product deliveries come in when our staff is, particularly our managers are in the store, so typically they would start around seven, maybe a little earlier, but we try to minimize it as well for obvious reasons. We don't want trucks parked all over the lot all day when we should have customers in the lot.
What's early in the morning? When you say early in the morning, what's early in the morning, as far as gas?
For gas, it could be-
Two in the morning, or are you talking six in the morning?
Probably more likely six, but I mean, I hate to tell you it's gonna be 6:00, because it could be really anytime. I mean, it really could be anytime. Could be in the middle of the day. I mean, it depends on sometimes when the terminals have a problem, or when the drivers can, when the, we don't own any trucks, we use common carriers, so when the haulers can get the product, that's when we have to take the product. So we're somewhat at their mercy.
But typically, it's not gonna be, I mean, I can't say it won't ever happen, but the middle of the day when it's-
Yeah, I was just gonna say, with other stores that you guys have been affiliated with, you know basically what it's gonna be.
It's usually very early in the morning.
Same with the trash pickup. It would be very early in the morning.
Yeah, typically is. I think, if I remember right, where the trash is located, it's basically a straight-in shot into it, off, on that side.
It's right, right there.
Yeah.
Right on the concrete pad where the, where the tanks are.
And that's where the tanker truck would be parked.
Yeah, when the tanker comes in to fill up, it would actually angle on that side, and that way there, all the pumps would still be accessible, the driveway in and out is still fully accessible, and they're basically tucked off to the side. Is there any other questions from the audience? Any other concerns? I'll bring it back to the board then. Do we have anything further that the board would like to add?
Did I wasn't here for the first go-around with this?
Yep.
With the elevation drop, which if, if, I remember correctly, is significant from the grand curb to Shaker Road, is there any need for any retaining wall of any purpose?
You're bringing the whole site up, if I remember correctly.
There will be a retaining wall on the back corner over here, because it'll bring everything else up.
Did notice there was a change from a previous set of plans. You have a light packs on the back of the building. They were set up as motion detector light packs, it doesn't say that anymore, are there still motion detector, or are they?
What would you prefer? Because it doesn't-
It's a good question, board.
Well, if it's facing American Saw, probably ones that are on permanently at night is better.
Photo Y or something like that? Operating by-
Yeah, I mean, if it's facing a residence, I'd feel different about it.
Yeah, if it faces the rail trail and the factory next door.
Right. It's safety for the rail-
Right, it'd be safer, right?
It's safety for the rail trail, and, and it's not gonna bother anyone at American Saw.
We're happy to leave them on.
Basically set up on a photo Y then, to where at dusk it goes on, perfect. See, I did look at both plans. Inside-out and backwards. I did notice on the interior plan, you do have a storage facility for what looks like cases, beer and stuff like that. Is that basically full cases that are just in a cooler?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's sort of like a self-serve for cases?
Yes.
When do you expect to start construction if this is approved?
The initial conversation with the two primary bidders that we've been talking to is July. But we've been, obviously, we can't start any of that full bidding process until we get our final approval, so we get the final approval, that starts that, we're motion, we're hoping July.
And as far as removing any soil from the site that is no longer necessary?
No, I believe any needs to be removed.
Okay.
We, we think there's some that needs to be shifted on the site, but not removed from the site.
That's what I was led to believe, and-
And we went through it, yeah.
Yeah, and based on that, that's great.
The engineer who's doing the building spoke with Bob Parent about that.
Right. Any other questions the board have?
Make a motion, pause the public hearing?
The motion made, is there a second to close the public hearing?
A second.
Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. I've moved to approve the alterations in the site plan.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? Yes. Obviously, it's gonna be based on the criteria that we set forwards tonight, you know, being the lighting in the back, and that, anything that we actually spoke of that you've agreed to is gonna be included into it. I think, I think the adjustments that were made were necessary and very good, and I definitely appreciate you bringing them back like that.
Well, thank you for your consideration. We look forward to getting this done.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you can thank.
Now you can thank. No, I do appreciate you bringing it back. It does make a lot more sense angling them and-
Say hello to Mark for me.
Hi, I'm Mark.
Do you still with you?
I would entertain a five-minute motion recess.
Probably at least 10 years, probably 15.
Seconded, all those in favor? Okay, welcome back, everyone, as we continue the planning board meeting of March 31st, 2016. Under new business, we have a request for waiver of site plan review, Jeffrey Duncan, financial advisor, 70 Stone Hill Road.
Thanks, Robin. Thank you very much, Robin. Request for waiver of site plan review, property owner is Jeffrey Duncan, 70 Stone Hill Road. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Financial Advisor. Owner of business is self. Owner of business address is 70 Stone Hill Road. Property district is residential AA. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 10 to 15 hours a week. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary business is home office for phone, calls, computer, and file. The application's been signed and dated May 18th, 2016.
Thank you. Sounds like a basic home office.
Yes.
My only concern with that one, being a financial advisor, it didn't say no clients come to the house.
No, he didn't.
I think we need to specify that in the waiver, that no clients are coming to the house.
But I don't think our bylaw requires that anymore. We- We changed the, the home business, uh, bylaw, and it simply states that it can't be, um, visually apparent. Doesn't say that they can't come, it just says that it can't be apparent.
Include those criteria in the, um... Be, because depending on his business, he can have a high rate of traffic.
That's what I was thinking.
Be successful.
Yeah, let's look at this from a different angle. From his application, I'm under the impression that there aren't any.
Right.
So, if there are, I would rather have it be spoken in out front on the table, instead of done in quiet, you know, in secrecy or whatever. So I agree with your comment, uh, I'd like to see, I, I'd like to make sure that the, uh... Yeah, so, so, so why don't we, uh, why don't we get clarification of that before we approve it?
I, I'd agree with that.
I would as well.
I, I know financial advisors in town who do have clients coming to their house, it's not very obvious. Obviously, if you're gonna do this, you're gonna do one client at a time, and you're not gonna want them to meet each other.
Right.
So, um, you know, it's...
So it's not like, once a month, four people are gonna be there. It's once a month, four people are gonna be there at different times.
Different times, exactly, you know, but, um...
So let's, let's clarify that.
Let's clarify, cause I'm, I'm, you know, I am concerned about the, the issue we have with other businesses, where somebody goes and rents an office, and somebody does it at their house, they get an advantage.
So based on the application that was put in front of us, where he said he will be the only person there, should we approve it based on that?
Why we call pending?
That says, if it's different, you're gonna have to have an amendment.
He said he was the only person there, he said one employee.
One employee.
I would like a clarification before...
Yeah, it's vague.
Right.
Okay. Robin, can, uh, we reach out to him and find out before we, uh, approve it?
Yes, we can.
Great. Let's jump right into the next waiver of site plan review. Bumpy's Corner Store, one seventy-four North Main Street.
Okay, property owner is Diane Miller, five Dewey Avenue, East Long Metal. Phone number is listed here, name of proposed business is Bumpy's Corner Store. Owner of business is Darryl Gibb, senior, twenty-one Fair Oak, uh, Road, Springfield. Property address is one seventy-four North Main Street, East Long Metal. Property district is business, it's an allowed use, proposed hours of operation are nine to six, Monday through Saturday. Number of employees are three. Date of last parking plan is January of twenty-ten, which is on file. Summary of business operation is retail packaged foods, natural and organic food, drinks, non-alcoholic, no milk or cream. Number of commercial vehicles is zero, the application has been signed and dated May twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen.
Where is this? Right across from the, um, car dealer on North Main Street, before the package store.
The three, three store brick place.
So where the dog wash?
Where the dog groomer was, and they moved down to the other end?
Yes. Okay.
So it's right, uh, Fury's, uh, Fury's Market used to be in there.
There's no parking.
I was gonna say that there's empty parking for convenience store? Well, there's parking up front, and then there's parking along the side of the building, when you go, here's Coughlin's.
Which is on street.
On street in the front.
Right.
On the side of the building, in the parking.
Which is also on the street.
No.
No.
Did they have a parking lot?
This is Coughlin's parking lot.
They have a strip parking lot next to Coughlin's.
Oh, that's right.
It's up against their building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is grandfathered in as, uh...
It's, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a tight location.
Convenience store before, so...
Make a motion to approve.
Retail, packaged food, okay, so it's a natural food store.
Correct.
Non-alcoholic, I'm not too concerned about the milk or cream, but...
Organic store, almost.
All right.
Retail store.
Retail store, yeah.
No, it's not even a convenience store.
Yeah.
Okay, um...
Natural food store.
We've had a motion on the floor, is there a second for approval? I'll second it.
I know, it's like...
Oh, wow.
Hey, guys.
Pulling teeth here tonight. Okay, have an emotion made and seconded, is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we have a request for waiver of site plan review, Kelly Property Management, six Lee Street.
Uh, James A. Kelly, six Lee Street. Uh, name of proposed business is Kelly's Property Management, owner of business is James A. Kelly. Business owner's address is six Lee Street, East Long Metal, property address is six Lee Street. Property district is, um, residential AA, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are five hours. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Summary of business operation is home office, no signs, no commercial vehicles, uh, property management, no customer visits, uh, computer and phone use only. The application has been signed and dated, uh, May thirty-first, which is today, twenty sixteen.
I like that they put in no, nobody visiting, no customers on site.
It looks like, uh, they pretty much covered everything as a home business.
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know.
Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bella Vista Estates contract extension?
Yes.
Okay. Letter, uh, dated May thirty-first, which is today, to Robin McDonald, Director of Planning, Zoning and Conservation, uh, regarding Bella Vista Land Holdings LLC. Dear Robin, I am writing this letter to request that the town of East Long Metal extend our construction agreement for Bella Vista subdivision, which expires June twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen. Sales and construction have proceeded slower than expected due to the poor economy in the past few years. We would appreciate the maximum time extension to this agreement that the planning board can agree to. Many thanks to the planning board for your anticipated cooperation in this matter. The application has been signed by Joseph Parcella, manager of Bella Vista Land Holdings LLC. Carbon copy, Ken Pecoy.
And where did we stand with that? They originally had...
They were granted a three-year extension, um, in June of two thousand and thirteen to June twenty-eighth.
And that's for phase...
It's a roadway construction for, for phase one, yes.
And do we have any clue how far along they are with it? I know there's houses in there, I know people are living in there.
I didn't go to the barbecue, did you?
No, I didn't. So let's just think for a minute. Hypothetically, just thinking aloud, if we did not grant the extension, what would happen?
I don't think that's ever happened.
Then we have to reapply, yeah.
And then what happens?
Reapply for a definitive subdivision?
Yeah.
Because...
The, this phase two is under a covenant. Phase one is under a bond.
And phase one is what they've currently built?
That's, yes, part of phase one they, they've built.
So there's, so there's more of phase one they haven't built?
Correct.
And that's...
So, so, so the, so the additional construction is not part of phase two, it's still part of phase one?
Yes.
What is phase two, then? Cause this is before my time.
Phase two is under covenant, and they're not doing anything until they finish phase one. Then they'll come back to the board and get a reduction, get a, a bond in lieu of covenant, so that they can get building permits.
So the street is basically in and all, and this is...
It's not completed, well, parts of it are for the houses that are there, but it's not totally completed, in other words...
Phases are there?
Two.
There's two total, and, but, to date, both have been approved by the planning board for subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we don't extend it, they'll come in with exactly the same plans, it's just gonna cost them a bunch of money, and that's a bunch of time.
Exactly.
Okay.
But nothing really changes.
Nothing really changes.
All right, so...
Unless you deny it.
Well, I mean, they're, they're making progress, it's not like...
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree.
This is Pecoy, they're...
I see it every day, it's across the street from me.
Yeah, it's not like they're going broke or anything.
Right.
No, I'm in favor of extending it, I just wanted to, I, way before my...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood both sides of the argument.
And now the question would be, how long would the board be in favor of extending it for? We've already done a three-year.
Three.
I, I, I would, I'd feel more com, I mean, I have no problem whatsoever with the extension, but I'd feel more comfortable doing it a year-by-year basis. I mean, they, they can come back a year from now, just give us the same letter. We give another, give them another year, that's fine, but at least that way we get another, another look, just in case there's something...
Do you happen to know how far along they are, do they need a year, do they need more than a year?
I, I'm not sure what was it, see, I wasn't on the planning board when the original project was approved, so I don't know what is exactly is phase one and phase two, but I can, I can tell you that what they've currently built, as we all know, they're, they're, they are building homes there.
Yeah.
So, so there is progress, which is, which is a positive thing. So, um, I personally would rather do year-by-year, and, and if everything goes as it has so far, I'm sure it will get extended a year from now, on and on and on, but I'd rather do it that way.
George? I, I, I would go for three years, they, you know, they're making progress. The only thing that's, that's keeping them from finishing it is they're not selling. Okay? And, you know, we know that these are high-end houses, that they're very expensive. The housing market is starting to heat up now, if, uh, if they get buyers. And it takes them, what, a month to put up a house? You know, it, it goes quickly once it gets going, and once they've got the...
Well, a little faster, a little longer than mine. I, I tell you what, uh, you could build my next house, George.
What if they start doing the foundation to...
That way I could sell mine and be in in a month.
So it is, it is a timely process.
But a lot of it's inside, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, I, I drive by, one day there's a foundation, you know, two weeks later, there's a roof is on, it seems like.
Yeah, the shell construction, correct.
But the, the point is, once they get the lots sold, then they'll put the street in. You know, you don't put the street in until you've sold the lots.
I think, like I said, I know you can drive up and in, uh, quite a distance, uh, up to the left, there's the turnaround, uh, done. So as far as the road that's there, there's quite a bit that's done, and the houses just...
And everything that they've done has already been approved by this current, and past planning boards, correct?
Yeah.
I would be more inclined to agree with George in saying, let them have the three years, um, rather than having to maintain coming back year by year to reapprove something we've already approved.
I, I, I'm fine with that, but the only reason why I like a year is because it just gives us...
Time to...
A little control over it.
Just in case, only, and I'm sure it's a real long shot, but just in case we need to revisit for some reason.
And I'm just thinking, giving them three years gives them greater, um, credibility when they go to their, to refinance, which they have to do, I'm sure periodically. And, you know, if they tell their banker, you know, we're okay for three years, they're more likely to get cooperation, and it's a year-to-year thing. And I'd rather than get, get their financing and get the thing done than, you know, be...
Hey, I'm fine either way, I mean, this is just my personal preference, but I'm fine either way.
And by extending it, if something changes, if something's happening that's not accurate or depicted in, uh, the definitive plan, obviously, we still hold the rights to bring them back in and say, whoa, wait a minute, this isn't by the plans.
There's bonds, yeah, you said one is a bond, correct.
How much, how much is the, uh, bond money that we're holding?
You don't have it memorized? I, I would tend to agree, uh, with the three years, and, uh, so I would entertain a motion that we extend the contract for a three-year period.
Just June twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
So a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have minutes.
Wonderfully edited.
Thank you. May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, minutes, I did send Donna the corrections, she is taking care of them.
We got those today, in the mail from Donna.
So, is there a motion to approve?[1777.02]